We're up Dylan.
Okay. Ready?
Yeah.
There you go, okay. Good morning, everybody. Nice to see you all. Dylan Mullinix with the MPO and I just want to acknowledge it's been awhile since we've been here. At least that we've been here to give an update on just MPO in general. I know Gunner's been out here and we've done a few special projects to update, but this is something we're trying to get back more in the habit of meeting with our member communities, getting that dialogue and that conversation, you know, communication back going again. So apologize it's been awhile, but it's something we're trying to remedy. I do have a couple of updates here for you today. Mainly just want to talk about in general what's the MPO and I know all of you are aware of that, so I'll go through that part fairly quickly because you guys are a little unique and at least the three of you and I think the whole board has been on the MPO at one time or another, at least maybe as an alternate, but for most part, policy members too. And then have a couple of updates on a few key projects that are going on now that we want to make sure that you're aware of and be prepared for. So just a quick overview, the MPO as you might recall is they're federally required organizations in urban areas over 50,000 and they were put together back in the 1960s when the interstate system was being built as a way to get all those communities to come together, you know, to discuss that complexity of a new facility going in, make sure everybody's on the same page. Every time there's an infrastructure bill, a transportation infrastructure bill in the federal congress, those tweaks come of what the MPO is required to do, what our roles and responsibilities are, but really the MPO, it's not me as staff, it's really you guys and all the peers that you have across the communities of elected officials and so forth that come together from the cities, counties, transit authorities, DOTs and so forth to have those critical conversations about our transportation infrastructure. There's a few key functions that are required of MPOs. You know, we have to have that decision-making structure, we have to do a long-range plan, we have to look at data and make sure we have performance-based planning, we have to involve the public. In contrast, MPOs typically, and we're pretty adhered to this as well, MPOs typically don't build or own or operate anything. It's really just the convening, the discussions and then helping get those projects funded. So with that out of the way, getting more into our MPO, we're one of nine MPOs in the state, we're the largest one that's fully within the state and we're also somewhat unique in that we are the only, what I'll call an independent or standalone MPO in the state, one of the few in the country. Most others are housed within a city, they're housed in a regional planning commission or council of government, we're the only one that's not like that and we've been that way for quite awhile. We started out that way, but since 1983, we've been that independent MPO. So this is our 40th anniversary of being in that sort of structure. We have 20 voting member communities and I'll talk a little bit about who can be a member community and what the representation is. That all changed with our bylaws in our 2080, a couple, you know, five or six years ago, back in 2018. One thing I do want to call your attention to is that black line that surrounds the planning area, that is the planning area boundary that you see up there. And take a little bit of a tangent here because there's an opportunity that as would impact the county as respect to that, with respect to that planning area. So we have to look at our planning area boundary once every five years as we do our long-range plan update and we also have to look at it because there's some ramifications from the census, on the decennial census side to make sure that we're incorporating all the urban area. However, there is some opportunity and some potential decisions that have to be made with respect to SERPA. The county is also a member of SERPA, the Regional Transportation Planning Alliance. It's essentially what, similar to what the MPO does, but outside of that urban area, it's more for the rural portions of Polk County as well as the surrounding seven counties that aren't in the Ames or Des Moines MPOs. We've had a contract with SERPA since 1994, however, they voted earlier this month to enter negotiations with MIPA. It's another organization you've probably heard of, the Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance. The MPO currently staffs both of those organizations, but the MPO board told MIPA earlier this fiscal year, we'll give you one more year and then you've got to go find a new home. The MIPA communities are largely the same as the SERPA communities, so they're looking to buy them together, leave the MPO's assistance and kind of do their own thing. Polk County's in an interesting position where you're a member of SERPA, but you're not a member of MIPA and so that might be a little awkward. An opportunity is there for the whole county to come into the MPO's planning area boundary. So that would, that's kind of what's shown there is just looping in everything else. That would include the areas of Elkhart and Reynolds and just the rural portions of Polk County. There's a couple of projects that are in the current tip, you know, they're the program that have funding awarded to them in that SERPA area that we would have to make sure we account for because we don't want to lose any funding that SERPA's already provided to the county. And I just want to make a quick point on this, SERPA works a little bit differently than the MPO. SERPA, the communities in SERPA, Polk County being one of them, you receive a direct allocation from SERPA of about $400,000 a year. So you don't have to compete for that, you just get that by being a member. Whereas at the MPO, you have to compete for those funds. The MPO gets around $16 million, you have access to that, but you have to compete with everybody else. If you were to come in fully into the MPO, you would lose access to that $400,000, but the MPO would get a little bit more in its funding too, which you'd have access to potentially more funds, more than that $400,000. So that's the trade-off that you're looking at here. Like I said, there are some projects that you've already programmed and I've discussed this with Aaron and Brett before he retired Bob Rice to discuss this. They thought it sounded promising, I don't want to say they were totally sold on it, but I know there's been some discussions, but I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of this and if you have further questions, I've got information I can share with you that kind of breaks this all down.
So the advantage to leaving SERPA to go to our MPO would be the ability to possibly compete for more money?
Correct. Right now, you get $400,000 for that rural area, but that's as most as you're going to get in the given year. With this, you could do multiple $400,000 projects or you could go for a $3 million project, you know, whatever it might be. There's also, there's more money available in some other, so there's also TAP funding, which is for trails and streetscapes and sort of, that sort of thing. Those at both MPO and SERPA are competitive, those aren't directly allocated to SERPA, but the MPO receives about twice as much, a little over twice as much as what SERPA would get. So there's just more access to some funding as well. But yeah, that's the main, that's the main benefit and then you're also not working with two planning agencies. You know, right now, we're all together, so it really doesn't matter, but when they break off, if they break off on their own, you're going to be dealing with either the MPO, which has a little more resources or kind of a one-person shop.
Dylan, help me with this, it'll interrupt you off here, but so Central Iowa Regional Planning Transportation Alliance, right?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, so, you know, initially when I first got elected, Kurt Bailey, I went to a couple of meetings early on, had a real, real rural feel, a lot of rural communities and what have you, we're engaged, but we ended up having Kurt Bailey serve on SERPA for a long time.
Yep.
Who does it now, is it Brett or?
Brett is, Brett is the one on there, yep.
Okay, okay.
I believe it's either Brett or Aaron, I think they both attended the last meeting.
Okay, I was just curious, so, okay.
Yeah, you're right, it's a little different feel, it's in practice, they do the similar functions, but it's just because it's so dispersed throughout Central Iowa and because of that sub-allocation, there's not a lot of regional conversations, it's really just a way to program the money and do some projects.
When we go through the allocation, the annual allocation, is it STBG?
Yes.
It was STP, but they changed.
They changed the name, yep.
But anyway, yeah, that's usually around 16 million, right?
Correct.
And I just tell my colleagues that, you know, the time that I've served on the MPO, remember when I served on that allocation funding subcommittee? So we're pretty closely with all the jurisdictions Polk County does and I think we've done extremely well in getting, you know, funding for a major, they're usually pushing regional projects.
Yes.
They got, you know, that has a real high level of priority when the committee's looking at how to impact the region or the, just impact your community. So regionally, I think we, Polk County did extremely well through that process.
Yep.
And it's a fair process, I think, so anyway.
Yeah, and I'll have some slides showing your, what you've received over the last several years, but yeah, you're right, you've done really well.
Bring it over there, Tom, do we, I may be asking this question wrong, but do we have projects that we're doing with SERPA right now?
Currently, you have three projects that are programmed in the SERPA region. One of those will be let here this winter, so that one's really not of concern, that'll be let before anything were to happen. The other two projects total about $960,000, I believe, I can't, I forgot it here, but what those two projects are. What I would propose to make sure that the county remains whole is, like I said, county's going to lose that $400,000 you receive every year, but the MPO in turn would gain about $250,000 each year. So what I would propose is that the county receives that increment until that you're made whole and then that would be dispersed among, you know, available to everybody else. And so the numbers work out pretty much exactly what you need over the five-year period with, we would, the way that we allocate funding, it's kind of weird, we do it four years in advance, so we've got four years worth of funding that we would get that $250,000, that's a million dollars, would cover your $960,000, everything comes out pretty clean.
So the advantage, A advantage, the only advantage, A advantage would be we'd be doing one planning organization rather than two.
Correct.
To me, it just cleans it up, it makes it a lot less confusing and the focus with the MPO and the work that we're doing there, doesn't get bogged down with the other stuff that's going on, yeah, it just, and, you know, we had that discussion, lengthy discussion about MIPA and my opposition tool was basically about, you know, number one, we're getting outside of our planning boundary and we're getting into things that don't really, you know, are really transportation-related and we had that debate, we don't want to go through that again today, but to me, this whole thing, your proposal makes, makes a lot of sense. I just, I think it makes it a lot cleaner and the initial $400,000, like I said, can be made up and like, when you see the slide to see how we performed, I think the county in general during the allocation process, it makes some sense, okay.
And to your question Supervisor Ronell, there's two other projects, there's one in the city of Reynolds and one for Polk County Conservation that are TAP funding, so trail projects. We would have to address those, but those are fairly small amounts, we'd be easily able to make up for that.
Thanks Dylan.
In terms of timing, what?
One of the issues I know that came from Public Works was that they budgeted that $400.
Right, yep.
You would get additional $245 of STBG money, maybe you said that, I missed it, but there's a way to.
Exactly, we would give that $245, $250,000 to the county until you're made whole for those projects that are programmed and then, then we would basically put that back into the kitty for everybody to compete over, so. That's what my proposal would be, that'd be up to the MPO board of course.
Have you guys, your staff been working with Public Works staff and now, because they've been talking to you, have they, John, Brett and Will, Bob before you left?
Yeah, and in terms of timing for when this would happen, we're really kind of, we want to make sure you guys are all comfortable with it and whatever process you need to do to decide that, as soon as you know, we can, we can make these changes to the planning area and go from there. Kind of jumping back into a little bit about the MPO, again, just some quick overview, we have 20 member communities, representation on the committees that the MPO has is based on population too. So on the policy committee, every community gets one representative and then you get additional representatives for every 50,000 in population. What that shakes out to is the city of Des Moines has five reps, Ankenine and West Des Moines have two, everybody else has one. And then on the executive committee, we expanded this back in 2018 when we went through the bylaws and 2080 adjustment, so now it's a larger committee and there's permanent representation, so designated representatives, those are the communities over 50,000 as well as Polk County, so you will always have a seat on the executive committee, at least in this framework. And then the communities under 50,000 basically are pooled together in three pods and they select two representatives from each pod. A little convoluted, it's something that we're going to be looking at, some feedback we've received over the last year or so, is maybe that committee's too big and we should take a look at it. Nothing's been decided, we just kind of started having discussions, so that could change over the next year or so, but to be determined. And then you're probably familiar with the overall structure, I know some of you have served on various committees and roundtables and so forth, this just shows you the full gamut of how the organizational structure works. You've got the three committees in the middle and then we have a lot of different roundtables, subcommittees and so forth. The point being is that we try to engage a lot more than just those 26 policy members there, there's a lot more that go into that, from technical staff, from bicycle pedestrian advocates to freight advocates and so forth that help us understand what the issues are and how to address them. So moving into the long-range transportation plan, as I mentioned, this is one of the required, one of the few key required things we have to do and we have to do it every five years. Our next plan update is due next November, so we have one year to complete this long-range plan. Like all plans, it has goals and objectives and so forth, but really where the teeth come into this is that any project that receives federal funding or wants to receive federal funding from the US DOT has to be included in this plan or justified by the plan. We don't have to identify every pothole, for example, but we have to basically say the plan supports reconstruction of roadways that are under certain level, as long as you're under that certain level, you'd qualify. So this is really where we're putting our focus over the next year. We've been doing a lot of background data collection and so forth, but here, pretty soon, we're going to start being more public-facing, reaching out to the communities to get projects that you want to see in that plan, doing public engagement, having the kind of the gritty conversations of, there's only so much money to pay for all these projects and we're probably going to, in the past, we oftentimes get more projects than we can pay for, so who gets in, who's not in, how do we creatively look at funding and so forth? The goal with this, my goal would be to be more strategic in how we go about our plan and not just have a laundry list of projects, but actually look at what can we effectively do and move the region forward? That'll have to happen in the next year. So our call to action right now, when we're working with the technical staffs, is start thinking about the projects you want to see in that plan, the things you know are coming, the issues you know you have, so we can make sure they're addressed in that plan and that planning process, so that at the end of the day, anything you want to be qualified for is for grants or money through the MPO is in that plan and therefore qualified.
Dylan, can I ask you a couple of questions? As long as I've served, I, remember when I served on the long-range transportation plan, but it was a long, long time ago. And I swear, and I brought it up the other day at the meeting with Zach, about the growth scenario and numbers and all that stuff, it seemed to be, of course, that was a long time ago when Scott Sturcian was the mayor out there, but he was running that long-range transportation plan committee, but we had another, we had a consultant with somebody that was gathering all that information, it seemed like, but now we're doing it internally, right?
We, so what you, I think, might be referring to, that was the Growth Scenario Task Force and I helped Adam Knowlting back in the day staff that.
Yeah, 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 that's right, okay.
So what we did was we used something called REMI, Regional Economic Models Inc.
I could remember that name, okay.
We received that from the DOT, we didn't have to pay for it, it was just data they provided us.
Right.
They don't use REMI, but they use something similar and we still get the data from them and then we take it from there and.
Right.
Allocate it.
So that data is important.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely important and that just tells us how much the region's going to grow and where it's going to grow and we work with all the communities to understand whether their population and employment growth's going to happen, so therefore we know what the impacts to the transportation system is going to be. That's all happening right now too.
And the other part of it is, and I brought it up to a couple of Des Moines members, you know, like as an example for my colleagues, like Des Moines, for me, out in my district, I really want to see them bring forward for the Long Range Transportation Plan, a reconstruction of Highway 163 or University from like probably East 33rd out to East 42nd Street. A lot of infrastructure that we moved, what have you, but in that case, it's a state highway, but it's in the city of Des Moines, so the city would have to, city of Des Moines would have to bring that forward to have it be part of the long-range transportation plan in order for it to be eligible for any federal funding, right?
Either the city or the DOT, yes.
City or the DOT, yeah.
And so we have to look at fiscal constraint, which means that we have to show how much money there's available to pay for all these things. So we look at the city's road use tax, the county's road use tax funds and property tax and all that kind of thing, but we also work with the DOT to understand how much money they have, so then we can get creative if it's on a DOT system, maybe they pay for it even though it's in the city or the county and, you know, we can do things like that too.
Okay, okay, thanks.
So that's one plan we're working on. Another newer planning initiative that we're just getting going with is through the Safe Streets and Roads for All program and this is a new federal program through the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill that was passed a couple of years ago now. There's a lot of new money out there for not just this program, but just in infrastructure in general. This is one we were lucky enough to identify the need, applied for and received, between the MPO and SERPA, we received a million dollars and so that's being split, $800,000 for the MPO area, $200,000 for the SERPA area. And this program works in kind of two phases. The first phase is to do the planning study or do the safety, it's called a comprehensive safety action plan, so we do the comprehensive safety action plan and then there's money available for implementation. And you have to have a qualifying comprehensive safety action plan before you can do the implementation. So what we're doing by the MPO receiving these funds and doing the study, we'll do the study for the entire area and I should mention, we're doing it for the entire county as well, even though that area outside our current planning area boundary. Once we have that qualifying safety action plan, every jurisdiction in the MPO area will then qualify for additional implementation dollars through this program. And we'll have to have a conversation later on of, does every community just go independently or do we work through the MPO to make a large ask? We'll figure that all out in a couple of years, once we know what the projects are. City of Des Moines recently did their Vision Zero Plan, which is very similar to this, so our plan really looks at everything outside of the city of Des Moines. We'll, we'll make sure they're consistent, they're complementary to one another, but we're not going to spend a whole lot of time focusing on this, Des Moines, you know, city of Des Moines, because they've already done that, we'll focus on all the communities outside of Des Moines within the planning area. So again, kind of the call to action is similar to the long-range plan, start thinking about where you have safety needs, I know you all hear from residents, you hear from, you know, you drive around the county and understand where there's high crash areas or where you see bicycle pedestrian car conflicts or whatever the case might be, every community's going to be a little bit different, but the goal is to make sure all that's included in here, we have all the projects in here, similar long-range plans, so they just qualify down the line. And it won't be just projects, we'll probably have some policy-related things that come out of this too, so there might be ordinance requests or speed limit adjustments, whatever the case might be, once we get through the data. And this one's a little bit different, long-range plan, we do internally with this program because we received such a large grant, we're able to go out and get outside assistance, so we've contracted with Tool Design, they're the same firm that did the city of Des Moines plan actually, as well as HDR Confluence and HR Green. So they'll be going out, meeting with the communities, meeting with the county to better understand what all the needs are, we're just kind of administering the program here. Any questions about that? Moving on to funding, we referenced funding a little bit, the MPO receives $16 million annually in Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. The box that you see there on the side, that comes from our long-range transportation plan and that's the guide, sort of guidelines of where those funds should be spent, so so much goes to transit, so much goes to bridge and so on and so forth. As we work through the long-range plan update, those percentages could change or we could come up with something totally different, but right now, that's the process we work under. We also have a couple of other programs called the TAP, Transportation Alternatives Program, again, this is for trails, bicycle pedestrian facilities, streetscapes and so forth, we get about $1.5 million annually through that. And then there's a new program through the infrastructure bill called the Carbon Reduction Program and we're going to get about $1.5, $1.4 million annually through that. We've had a conversation with the policy board that let's hold off on awarding that until we go through the long-range plan and rather than looking at it as spending $1.3, $1.4 million annually, let's look at it that we have $7 million to spend and how do we want to do that just more holistically? That's, again, I talked about being strategic with the long-range plan, that's kind of the idea that I'm looking for with that as well. So those are the three key funding streams that the MPO receives that we have jurisdiction, we being you all, you know, working with your peers from across the community, the policy board has jurisdiction to allocate and we put those in the tip and then that allows you to do your projects. As far as the schedule for how this typically works, here in a couple of weeks, early December, we will put out the applications and then you can see those are due back in January and then there's the process, as Supervisor Hockins Smith mentioned, he's on the subcommittee that looks at funding awards, so they hear all the presentations from the communities, understand the need, they get together and have the $16 million we have, we might have $50 million of a request and they have the hard job of, you know, figuring out who gets what and how much. That's all wrapped up by April or May to get into the tip. This is a map showing where projects have, you know, which communities have received funding over the last five years and I'll just jump ahead to this, it's a little easier to see and you can see Polk County's highlighted, so to the point made earlier, Polk County's done really well over the last, this is showing over the last five years, second only to the city of Des Moines and second in terms of the benefit ratio that compares how much you've received to how much you've paid in assessments. So again, you do really well and that's probably another reason to consider bringing in the rest of the county because you probably stand to gain more than that $40,000 you've been getting from SERPA.
Do our projects, I shouldn't know the answer to this, but don't, do our projects tend to dovetail with the city projects at the same time? I mean, we're not just, it's not just county projects, is it?
It depends.
I didn't hear it.
Well, I wondered if our projects tend to dovetail in with city projects at the same time?
We do sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, and like as an example, like when they, when they make their, when each jurisdiction comes in, makes their, presents their projects to the subcommittee, it'll, they'll be, sometimes they would even do a jointly, Pleasant Hill would support a project or Ankenine would support a project that might be in unincorporated Polk County or vice versa.
Yeah.
You know, because it impacts both of the, both jurisdictions.
Right.
And when I have met with county and public works staff, we have had some conversations about the MPO getting more involved and helping coordinate those types of things so that there's just different rules that apply, whether it's an unincorporated or incorporated and so, especially those areas primed for annexation, just to make sure that we know it's going to be city someday, let's just build it out the right way to begin with and we can help coordinate that.
I'll give you this perfect example, Northeast 23rd Street or Eastern Boulevard Reconstruction, Polk County's the lead jurisdiction on it, but that roadway has unincorporated Polk County, it has Pleasant Hill, it has Des Moines and Altoona's extremely interested in it because it's a major east-west corridor, people that, you know, back and forth downtown, so all So all four of those jurisdictions have a lot of interest in that reconstruction project, but Polk County just happens to be the lead on it.
Right.
We took the lead on it, you know, we wouldn't have had to, it could have been Pleasant Hill, I suppose, you know. But the difference is, I think, more than, and I think, at the, at the policy level of MPO, Polk County works with the MPO differently than, say, the city of Carlisle. Polk County, our Public Works Department, we do, we have the lead on a lot of stuff. MPO is extremely important from a federal level, from a planning standpoint for us, but smaller communities need a lot more assistance from MPO to actually get a project off the ground, just because of a staffing and.
Right.
And resource level.
Yep.
Right?
There's a lot of hoops to jump through to make sure that you qualify for the funds, and that if you were awarded the funds, you can actually use them.
Right, right.
Final thing I wanted to touch base on is the Purple Art Highway project, and I think Gutter's been here before to keep you updated on this, so some of this you might have seen before. The DOT has done some outreach and put together an action plan that basically identifies the steps that would be required to make this corridor turn into an interstate. There's state weight, or sorry, state speed exemptions and federal weight exemptions that would have to happen. There's a technical analysis, and then they'd make the request onto DOT once, DOT would make the request on to whoever they'd make the request on to to make that change, but all those things have to be accomplished first. So we've been focusing a lot of time working with the agricultural stakeholders to address the slow-moving vehicle and the weight exemptions issues. Sorry, I jumped over a slide there, but the, we've been working with the AG stakeholders, we started out with the cultivation corridor, they opened some doors to some other organizations who opened some doors to others. We've had productive conversations, but one thing that we've run up to is Polk County Farm Bureau, and then moved on to the state and federal farm bureau, have a policy that says that they oppose converting any divided highway to an interstate unless there's a viable alternative available. And we've gotten clarification, they need a physical viable alternative, we can't just do something policy-wise to make the current corridor, you know, meet their needs, it has to be something else. So that's where we're starting to spend our time is focused, and focus on is, what can we do to give them that viable alternative? We don't think that doing nothing is an option at this point, we know that there's safety issues that they, that they see, and that impact, you know, in turn impacts everybody else motor and public on that corridor. There's a lot of safety issues, and there's going to be more safety issues as that comes along, so we don't think we can just turn our blind eye to that now that we know that those issues exist. We also think we need each other, because they need a viable alternative, and by us giving them that alternative, we unlock the, you know, what needs to happen to get this to be an interstate. So we've been working, and we've had productive conversations, and we have a couple of ideas moving forward as next steps. So there's a short-term solution and more of a longer-term solution. The shorter-term one is looking at things that could help preserve and increase safety on the corridor in the short term. What those two things are, and this is in the DOT's jurisdiction, so they're working on this, one would be to extend the, the miles of roadway that they can have that slow-speed exemption. Right now, they can go from basically Altoona down to the US 65, 69 Cloverleaf, and that's where they have to get off, that's where the speed, the minimum speed limit exemption ends. That's a very dangerous intersection for them, it's very tight curves and short site distances and so forth, so we're looking at extending that to Southwest 9th. And again, that's, DOT is working on that, they've had conversations with the city as well. Everyone seems to be supportive of that, but the DOT needs to sign off on it. The other thing we're looking at is creating some sort of signal or beacon system on the corridor, so if there's slow-moving vehicles present, it would send out alerts or light up flashing signs, or whatever the case might be, to let the public know there's slow-moving vehicles ahead, you need to proceed with caution. Those are short-term solutions. The longer-term solution would be to find another alternative for them to cross the river and get to where they need to go. So we're starting to engage in that, we want to make sure that the AG stakeholders are part of that study, that we don't identify some corridor that they don't agree with, we want to make sure that they tell us what their criteria is, and that we've checked all the boxes that they need. In addition to that, we want to look at what would happen on this corridor if it became an interstate? What would the land use look like? What would the infrastructure needs be, not only transportation, but sewer and water and all that sort of stuff? To understand what the economic impact is, you know, what's the return on investment of doing that? And then we can compare the two, you know, a corridor, an alternative's going to cost however many million, but the return is going to be that plus some, then it makes financial sense to maybe go do this. That's the thing we need to know before we start trying to sell this and fundraise for it and everything else, we just want to understand, is this even worth, worth our time? So that's where we're at right now. We're trying to get some meetings set up, again, with the AG stakeholders in the next couple of months to, to start this process. I know there's efforts to maybe get some funding through the state to fund the Alternatives Analysis Study as well, and it showed that the state's in support of it too. So that's kind of where we're at, nothing's finalized, but that's the direction we're heading. I think that's all I have for you this morning, as far as our updates.
Dylan, what's the, what's the big plus of making an interstate out of that? It's always been kind of, this issue's always kind of binary to me, it's like.
Right. I think there's, there's a couple, the arguments that are being made is, one is the economic development impact.